Good morning. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. Before I continue with my remarks, I'd like to make a few introductions. First of all, our panel today, on my far left, Mr. Dominic Gully. On my near left, Ms. Laura Alderson. On my near right, Ms. Natalia Popovic. And on my far right, Ms. Sophia Ruddock. At the far-left end of this desk is our Deputy Secretary Treasurer, Barbara Bartosik. And in front of the panel and at the right end of the desk is Barbara's support staff. My name's Donald Taylor, I'll be chairing today. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. We acknowledge the land we're meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishinaabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you are called on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelist when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use share screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto Local Appeal Body, T-Lab, will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto Local Appeal Body or, in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons and public bodies, as those terms are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. Our hearing procedure is that I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation, if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the Chair, should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of this hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. And please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application, which is either the consent or the specific variances being requested. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on the application, if desired. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application, if substantially revised, to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then, individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we call on speakers in the hearing room first, and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion, and the application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Before hearing our first item this morning, we need confirmation of the minutes of the last meeting, which was held on October twenty-third. May I have a motion to adopt those minutes?
I will move, Mr. Chair, to adopt those minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Popovic, and is there a seconder?
Second.
Mr. Gully, thank you, all in favor? Okay, that confirms the adoption of the minutes of the meeting held on October the twenty-third. I will ask firstly of the panel, are there any items in this time slot to which you have a declaration of interest? None?
No.
And I ask the same question of staff. Are there any declarations of interest? No, thank you. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, have you received any requests for deferral from this morning's agenda?
Surprisingly, none today.
Yes, it is surprising, thank you very much. And do we have any files to close from this morning's agenda?
No, Mr. Chair, but if we could indulge and just adopt the 2026 hearing dates for the Etobicoke-Yorke Panel.
Right. I know we've all seen that calendar of projected dates. Can we have a motion to adopt them?
Sure, I can make that motion to adopt the dates of the panel meetings in 2026.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson. Is there a seconder for Ms. Alderson?
I will second that.
Ms. Popovic, thank you very much, all in favor? Okay, the 2026 calendar of hearings has been approved. So we can now proceed with the regular agenda, starting with item one. I'm just going to read a quick summary here. Thirty-four-eleven and thirty-four-twenty-nine Bluer Street West. The purpose of this application is to modify the development standards outlined in Bylaw eight-eight-five-two thousand and twenty-one, approved by the Ontario Land Tribunal, to accommodate thirty-one additional dwelling units within the Senior Citizens Retirement Home Facility. A total of one hundred and twenty-six dwelling rooms and fifty-nine dwelling units will be provided. There are six variances. We have, Community Planning has requested three conditions if we proceed to approval. Transportation Review has requested fourteen conditions. We have a Metro Links Advisory, a TTC Advisory, and we have a presentation from the agent, Emily Reisman. Ms. Reisman? Good morning. Yeah, if you could just give us your name and address, and then proceed with your presentation.
There we go, my name is Emily Reisman, I'm a planner with Urban Strategies at six hundred one ninety-seven Spadina Avenue in Toronto, M5T two C eight.
Thank you.
As you described, Mr. Chair, the project we are here to request variances for is thirty-four-eleven to thirty-four-twenty-nine Bluer Street West. It's right across from the Islington subway station. If we could go to the next slide, please, just to locate the site. As I mentioned, directly across from the Islington subway station, the site is currently vacant, and as you can see on the next slide, it is within the now-confirmed Islington PMTSA boundary. Those were approved by the province in August of this year. And for reference, it's also directly across from the Housing Now site on the north side of Bluer Street in that area. On the next slide, we provide an overview of what was approved in the existing zoning bylaw. As mentioned, this project is for a senior citizens retirement home facility with select non-residential uses at grade for animating the street. What happens in this building is considered a continuum of care, from memory care to assisted living to independent living for seniors. The original approval was for fourteen stories plus a mechanical penthouse, and as mentioned, there was a combination of dwelling rooms, which don't have a full kitchen or a full bathroom, that's the definition, it's one or the other, as well as dwelling units, which do include a full kitchen amenity, and that reflects this continuum of care for the retirement residents. The variances that we are seeking will add additional seniors' retirement living units, full suites, to the project in an additional four stories. There's also some additional height requested just to improve the floor-to-ceiling spaces across the length of the building, and that is baked into the variances you see before you. So the variances with respect to height and to address those additional floors of units, and then the similar variances requested to associate with the density and the parking. I can go through each of those in turn. So on the, sorry, if we go back one more. On the screen is an illustration of the additional four stories of height to support additional units, thirty-three new apartment-style units in the building and the mechanical penthouse above, and so the requested variance, including the mechanical penthouse, would be to a total height of sixty-five point zero nine meters. And as we've noted, the shadow impact is minor considering its relevance to the existing approved as-of-right shadow impact. There are no shadow impacts on Kenway Park, which is the nearest public park just to the west of the site. There is also a variance required for permission for increased density to accommodate those additional floors in height. The total permitted density is an increase of one point two times for a final density of seven point six, and a related increase in the gross floor area from the approved fourteen thousand three hundred square meters to sixteen thousand six hundred and thirty-six square meters. And I will note that that permitted increase in density does take into account a road widening that was secured through the original approval, and so that's on the basis of the net site. There is also, oh, I'm sorry, there's just one more in the previous slide, thank you. Because of the way the bylaw was originally structured, we need an increase to the permitted number of dwelling units, those full suites, to increase from twenty-eight to fifty-nine. And then there's a reduction in the number of parking spaces in total. There's no additional parking, this very tight site being provided on the property, but also, as a result of the approval of the PMTSA, the effective requirement for parking on the site is now zero. And so, but relative to the approved bylaw, the reduction in the total number of spaces would be from forty-six to thirty-five spaces for residential uses provided on-site. And just in summary, it's my opinion that the requested variances are minor, and they are appropriate for the development of the lands for the purposes of adding more seniors' residential uses to the site in the Etobicoque Centre across from Islington Station. They do conform with the general intent of the bylaw and with the official plan and the Etobicoque secondary plan. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, very helpful and excellent delivery.
Thank you.
I'm going to turn the opportunity over to the panel to ask questions, but I'll ask you one. Are you familiar with and satisfied with the conditions that have been requested by Community Planning and Transportation Review?
Yes, we are working with Community Planning on going through those conditions, particularly the ones requested by Development Engineering regarding the hydrant test study, et cetera, and those requested from Transportation Planning are consistent with those that are part of the NOAC for the site plan application. Excuse me, that's already been making its way through, so they're on our radar and we're working through them.
Okay, thank you. My panel, any other questions or comments for Ms. Reisman?
I'm just, out of curiosity, I know the Housing Now site is across the street, and they are going to decommission the Islington bus terminal there. Is that, so is the Housing Now site going to be built on top of the station? Do you happen to know?
That's my understanding, yes, but I admit I'm a little bit fuzzy on those details. It's been a while since I've looked in it, but effectively, I think that's the understanding, that that bus circulation will be revised through that area.
Okay, and the other, just got a quick question. The parking that you talk about, it's how many spaces, thirty-five?
Thirty-five.
Is that staff parking? Like, where are staff going to park?
It's including opportunities for staff, but there's also, I'm sorry, I should be making my remarks through you, Mr. Chair, to the thing. There was an analysis undertaken at the time of the original approval for the zoning bylaw that admittedly did go through the OLT, nevertheless, that many of the staff that work in this facility, that will work in this facility, either live in the area or will be using transit. That's one of the benefits of its location. And so the minimal amount of parking, or the appropriate amount of parking that's provided on-site is primarily for residents. Again, it's a continuum of seniors' care, so there are some that will still be driving and have access to vehicles, but I think the majority of comings and goings from this site, both for the limited amount of retail staff and residents, will be by transit.
Some will still have their licenses.
Some will still, yes.
We hope.
Hail and hearty.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
No other questions or comments? Okay, then let's go into committee for discussion, if we need it, or a decision. Motion.
Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion. I want to thank the agent for making an excellent presentation, and, as the Chair said, very thorough and clear. Chair, I believe that the six variances that are being requested on this application are reasonable and certainly desirable. The topic development that's being proposed here is desirable at a very appropriate location as well, compatible with densities that are being created at this location across from the Islington subway station. I move approval of the application as presented with two conditions. The development conditions stipulated in the report of October twenty-nine, and the planning conditions as reported on the report of October thirtieth. Move approval with those two conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Is there a seconder for Mr. Gully?
Yes, I'm happy to second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson, all in favor? That's unanimously approved, thank you. Moving on to item two. Twenty Ashfield Drive. The purpose is to legalize and to maintain the attached garage currently under construction. There are six variances. We have an order to comply, a planning condition, a Metro Links Advisory, a Ministry of Transportation Advisory, two letters of opposition. And Thomas, can you tell me, are there any, I see no registered speakers. Are there any in the room or at home?
No, there's no one currently. I do see someone that I don't recognize, so I'm just going to see if they're here for this item. Oh, no, we have the agent, just anyone.
Okay, so I think, in light of the opposition letters, I think we need to hear from the agent, Dejan Vukalec. And perhaps that presentation could focus on those letters of opposition, comment on, because the people aren't here to speak to them, but you've read them. We'd like to hear your take on them.
Good morning, committee members. My name is Dayan Vukalec. I'm an agent on behalf of Mr. Florian Aggo of Twenty Ashfield Drive. We are here to discuss the addition of-
Sorry, your address?
One fifty-four Markson Road, Guelph, Ontario.
Thank you.
We are here to discuss the proposed garage addition at Twenty Ashfield Drive, situated at the north end of the property in an east-to-west orientation, leading from the roof peak height at the northwest corner of nine, six, five point nine meters, and sloping towards Asheville Drive at the northeast end of the property to just under six meters, sorry, four point three meters. The garage is a typical two-car residential garage with a gable projection, which provides an architectural feature in the canopy. Our design does not exceed the height of the existing roofs, or it does not exceed the zoning requirement variance of nine meter, nine point five meter peak height of a roof, and it is within the design and character of the neighborhood and the homes adjacent. As, this is not an overbearing garage. As the letter stated, we have intent to finish the garage in architectural features and finishes that meet the neighborhood aesthetic, as well as the current home from that construction in the early nineteen, early nineteen sixties. Now, as, we do know there's a setback variance that we request, and our current setback is, at the north property line, is point five five meters. We understand the requirement is point nine meters. With that exception of point three five meters, we ask for approval on that variance, as we believe will not impact the snow accumulation on the adjacent property lines, and as well will not impact Unit twenty eighteen's concern of shade, shading. Currently, the way the garage is designed in a sloping manner from north, from west to east, we did a sun diagram study and noted that there will be minimal shading impact on the property in mid-July for approximately two hours of the day, which is typical to any multi-residential or residential development. Additionally, our intent is to provide safe vehicle storage for Mr. Aggo, and as to not further impact any surrounding properties. The intent is to improve the value of the home, the character of the home, and the character of the neighborhood. Additionally, we respectfully disagree with the concern of snowdrifts as the way the site is situated. East to west, all the prevailing winds coming from the north will not impact or collect snow on any adjacent of the neighboring property at Unit eighteen. Additionally, we will implement snow control measures such as eaves troughs and downspouts, and we can also add heat trace cables in the eaves troughs to ensure that there is no prevailing snow or snowdrift onto the neighboring properties. I do understand that there is a point three three meter allowance for eaves troughs and downspouts to encroach on a setback. However, we're still beyond that limit as well. If you have any questions, please, I'll be happily to answer them.
Okay, just one quick question. You said something midway about, I think you were talking about the side yard setback?
Correct.
And I thought I heard you say zero point five?
Zero point five, so fifty-five centimeters is the setback in our design, and based on the city Etobicoke bylaw, point nine meters is permitted. That's where our variant request for the technical variance is.
So how does that comment relate to your, what variance? Is your variance correctly stated here? Is it number three? Minimum required side yard setback one point two, you're proposing zero point three three?
One point two is if there is windows. We do not have any windows on that elevation of the garage, so the permitted setback variance is point nine meters.
Is the variance you're requesting, number three, accurate?
No, it's not. It should be point one, zero point nine meter variance.
You're saying the altered dwelling will be located zero point nine, not zero point three three?
No, not zero point three three, no. That is a-
So I guess my point is you're requesting us to change that variance to read, the altered dwelling will be located zero point nine meters from the east side lot line?
So-
Make sure you're right, because once we make this decision, that's set.
Based on the design-
It's zero point eight seven, you got to come back.
So, based on the design and the survey, that decision, zero point three three, I'm unsure where that was, how that was written, it should be zero point five five.
How does that relate to zero point nine? I'm sorry, I'm really confused. I want to know if variance three, as stated, is accurate? And if not, how should it be changed?
It is not accurate. The minimum required setback is zero point nine meters in accordance with the bylaw, and our altered dwelling will be located zero point five five meters.
Okay, panel, are we satisfied with the sufficiency of this requested change? We stated upfront, of course, that we do not entertain changes at the hearing. However, in situations where the requested change is better than what's requested and what the public is aware of, we have, on occasion-
Chair, I, sorry, Chair.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. No, go ahead.
In my view, you went through zoning review, correct?
Yes.
You went through zoning review, and it was identified that the east yard or the side yard requirements are one point two, and you're suggesting that your proposal, the east side lot line, will have a setback of zero point three three. If it's ameliorated, which sounds like it will be better, it's a good thing. But I think that what we have before us today is zero point three three. And you have a fairly positive report from Planning. You saw the Planning Report, correct?
Correct.
And Planning are in support of this. So if you end up with a building permit plan, sorry, building permit, which is better than zero point three three, you're better off. Would you not be better off?
Correct, we will be better off and have less encroachment on the neighboring property.
So you're okay leaving variance three at zero point three three? Even though you may have zero point nine or zero point five five?
We are okay with leaving it, but we will improve it. It will be improved in the final design.
Thank you.
The other issue is, the planning condition is to construct, as illustrated on the site plan submitted on September the twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, this garage, it's already constructed. But it's not going to be constructed in accordance with those drawings.
So Chair, I think Planning has based their comments on a plan which they reviewed, stamped dated September twenty-fifth. September twenty-fifth, that's what I have.
Yeah.
So, that site plan has to be adhered to. So, if it, if the site plan changes, it ameliorates it. And again, I don't think that any variance would be triggered by providing a side yard which is more generous than point three three. So I feel comfortable proceeding with, if this were to be approved, with the planning condition that it would adhere to the site plan dated September twenty-fifth, because that is what city planning, Planning Report quotes on their report of October the- on their report of October the twenty-eighth. I feel comfortable proceeding on that basis. Tying it to the site plan dated September twen, twenty-fifth, and that's what the October twenty-eighth report of planning states. And that's up to the applicant, whether he wants to proceed. Perhaps, this is correct, the point three three? Perhaps it might, might be better, or they may change it. But I feel comfortable dealing with yet, the application as it is today, and tying it to the planning condition of October twenty-eighth. I'm not sure if I'm clear, or if I've-
I, I believe you are, but I'm open-
Thank you.
Opening it up to the rest of the panel. You've heard Mr. Gully's inclination on this, are you supportive of it, or do you have any other questions?
Can I just ma, I just have a comment-
Yeah.
-to make. I know that in, in the presentation, the applicant said that it was in keeping with the neighborhood. And I, I know there are no height variances on this, and that's the issue for me, because I have nothing to hang my hat on here. But I, I think, I don't know if you have any intention, if your, if your owner has any intention of building, putting a second story on the house. To me, I'm, I'm going to be voting against this, because I believe that the opposition letter I read from eighteen Asheville kind of spelled it out for me in photographs that they attached. I just think it's obtrusive. I think it doesn't fit with the house, never mind the community. It doesn't fit with the house. I just, I, I think it's too much. I think it's an overbuild, and I know there's no height variances requested. But I, I just think it, to me, it doesn't fit with that particular house. So those are my comments.
Okay, Ms. Roderick, or Ms. Popovic, any comments, questions? Okay, then let's go into committee. I don't know if we need any more discussion. Feel free, otherwise, let's proceed to hear a motion. I guess to either approve with conditions or refuse.
Also, Mr. Chairman, I feel comfortable with the application, and I understand my colleague's concern with respect to possibly the pitch of the roof and the adjacency of this to the existing house and to the neighbors on either side. Are there any speakers on this item, by the way?
Uh, no, there's not.
There are no, no speakers. I, I feel very comfortable with the application. I know that the site plan that I reviewed showed zero point five five as far as the side yard is concerned. And they're asking zero point three three, which makes me feel very comfortable. I know that it appears to be overbearing adjacent the existing house, but I think from a urban forum point of view, the house and this proposed, proposed garage, the structure itself does fit, in my view. So I'm prepared to move approval, subject to the planning report of October the twenty-eighth, to tie it to the site plan. There are comments from Metro Links and MTO, but those are only advisory. So subject to that condition, Chair, I'm going to move approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gully. Is there a secondor for Mr. Gully's motion?
Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to second that motion. Recognizing the comments of my colleague and appreciating the concerns about the height, I balance that with the community planning comments and with the MTO review and the conditions imposed. And as a matter of administrative efficiency, the matters in minor variance number three, I agree with the earlier comments, can be dealt with down the road, in particular if they ameliorate the situation. On the basis of those thoughts, I support the motion, uh, excuse me, I second it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Popovic. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, the motion to approve with conditions carries by vote of three to two. Very close. So thank you for your presentation. I guess just a message to all those listening. Please make sure that you correctly and accurately state your requested variances before you show up at this panel. Very important. We normally, we could, and I stated it upfront, we don't entertain changes at this hearing. However, we decided that we would sort of waive that today in your favor. So, thanks for coming.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Item number three. One ten Kingsway Crescent, to construct a second-story rear addition at the southwest, east, southwest corner of the existing dwelling. There are five variances. We have three support letters. No communication from agencies with regard to comments or conditions. Three support letters. Panel, I would propose that we treat this as being straightforward, not requiring a presentation? We all agreed? Okay, so Charles Chan Y is the agent. Mr. Y?
Good morning, good morning, my name's-
Yeah, good morning. So sir, we, we've, the panel doesn't need a presentation on your application. You, of course, can speak to us if you wish, but in lieu, I will ask you, if you, you would be agreeable to answering any questions that we have, may have in lieu of you making a presentation?
No, that's, that's correct.
Is that okay?
If your guys are okay to move forward, or if you have any questions, please let me know. And my address is twenty Smithwood Drive, in Tobico.
Okay, then we'll proceed on that basis. So, panel, are there any questions or comments?
Just that it looks to be an, an improvement over the existing condition, so I will be supporting this application.
Okay, so if no other questions, let's hear a motion.
I'm happy to make a motion. This is a straightforward application, and it's desirable, and I move for approval. Don't think there are any conditions on this at all.
That's right.
So we're good.
Is there a secondor for Ms. Alderson's motion?
I will second that motion, that-
Thank you, Ms. Popovic. All in favor? That's unanimously approved. Thank you, Mr. Y.
Thank you, committee members.
Thank you. Moving on to item four. Well, should we, should we just proceed with four members? Ms. Bartosa, okay. Ninety-seven A Evans Avenue, purpose is to construct a new deck in the rear yard. There's one variance. No information on file that would be germane to our decision on this one. Again, I would propose that we treat it as straightforward, not requiring a presentation? We're all agreed with that?
Yep. I'm happy, if there are no questions, I'm happy to go forward with a motion.
Okay, no, firstly, I need the agent's permission.
Ah.
Or the owner, actually. The owner is Bhavesh Mistry?
Good morning, committee. My name is Bhavesh Mistry. I'm the owner of ninety-seven A Evans Avenue.
Thank you. I, I hope you heard that we've decided that we don't need a presentation on your very straightforward application. Would you be okay with us proceeding on the basis of answering, asking questions if we have any? In lieu of you making a presentation?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, good to hear. So, may we have a motion to consider?
So, I can do that. If there are no questions, I'm prepared to make a motion. I believe this application meets the four tests. Under the Planning Act, I move for approval with no conditions.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson. Is there a secondor for Ms. Alderson's motion?
I will second that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Popovic. All in favor? That's approved unanimously? Thank you, Mr. Mistry. Mr. Mistry?
Thank you, committee. Have a, have a good day. Bye-bye.
Item five, one forty-five Fourth Street. Purpose is to construct a second-story addition above the existing dwelling. We have a support petition. No agency comments or conditions. Panel, may we proceed on the basis that this is straightforward and not requiring a presentation?
So, Mr. Chair, there's a switch-up, so the owner will be joining us. It'll be Evan. He is online right now.
Milan Lukovic.
Yeah, so it's a change, it's going to be Evan To, Tony, so I'm just going to connect him now.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and fellow committee members. My name is Evan Toyn, William Evan Toyn. I am one of the homeowners of one forty-five Fourth Street. I believe there was a small hiccup. My agent Milan had registered for this meeting. And I guess I was supposed to do a separate registration, but I'm here to represent our request for three minor variances with respect to our second-story addition on the existing dwelling.
Okay, well, welcome. Hope you have a couple of minutes to prepare.
I've been listening along, yes.
The good news is, we don't, unless you have anything to say, we don't really need a presentation. This is very straightforward. Are you okay with us proceeding on the basis of questions if we have any?
I am okay with that, yes.
Okay, let's do that. So, panel, any questions or comments for the agent? None? Okay, may we then hear a motion?
Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion on this. We have three variances. All three variances, in my view, are, are nominal, they're appropriate, they're desirable. I'm going to move approval, no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Is there a secondor for Mr. Gully's motion?
I will second that, Mr. Chair, and in recognition of the petition in support.
Thank you very much, Ms. Popovic. Is there a secondor? Uh, sorry, all in favor? Okay, that has been approved. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much, Chair and committee.
You're welcome. Item six is a revised application, seventy-three Matisse Avenue. The purpose is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached, an attached garage. Variance number one has been revised. There are three variances in total. And we have Urban Forestry requesting conditions one and two. Panel, maybe we proceed on the basis that this is a straightforward application? No issues, thank you. Nicholas Ansari is the agent? Mr. Ansari?
Yes.
Searle, sorry.
Yes.
Did I pronounce your name roughly correctly?
Roughly correctly, yes.
Good, good, okay. So we, we don't really need a presentation on this very straightforward application. Are you okay with proceeding on the basis of questions if we have any? In lieu of, in lieu of a presentation?
Absolutely.
Okay, I've got one question. Are you familiar with an okay with Urban Forestry's conditions one and two?
Uh, we were expecting that, yes.
Okay. So, panel, any other questions or comments on seventy-three Matisse Avenue? Then may we hear a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll bring that motion.
Okay.
I move to approve on the application, as I believe it meets the four tests. I believe there are conditions from Urban Forestry.
One and two.
One and two, to be part of the, of the motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much.
Chair, just on, on the revised application, sorry, we can record that. The revised application, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gully, that's a new amendment.
Good catch. Friendly amendment. All in favor? That's approved unanimously? Thank you, Mr. Ansarle.
Thank you.
Item seven, forty-eight Wanisca Avenue. Purpose is to permit interior alterations to the existing apartment building in order to accommodate two additional dwelling units. A total of eight dwelling units will be provided. There are four variances. We have transportation review conditions. And we have one opposition letter from a tenant, who I believe is Diane Mobbs. I think, Mr. Palmeroy, agent?
Yeah, yes, hello.
Yeah, if you could just identify yourself and your address?
Yes, good morning, it, my name's Scott Palmeroy. I'm from Palmeroy Architecture at eight eight three Pape Avenue in Toronto.
Okay. This appears to be very straightforward. I don't think we need a presentation. However, we're going to invite Diane Mobbs to speak to this. And would it be okay for you to not present, but be prepared to rebut Ms. Mobbs when she's spoken to us?
Yes.
And panel, are you agree that we, in agreement that we don't need a presentation? Okay, good. So let's invite Diane Mobbs to speak to us? Ms. Mobbs?
Yes, I'm here.
So you live in this building, Unit one?
I do, yes.
Okay, then, if you could maybe just summarize, I know you've written a letter, which we've read, but if you could just summarize that for us?
All right, so I live at forty-eight Wanisca, Unit one, at Tobico. And I live directly above the six-car garages that are being proposed to be converted from garages to apartments. So currently, in the, in this, at this site, there are, there's a six-car garage underneath the, the lower two apartments. It's a six-plex building. And so I'm on one side, I would be above three of the garages being proposed to be removed and, and converted to an apartment on each side of the building. So then it would be converted to an eight-unit building. And so the proposal indicates removing those six parking spots and eliminating them. There are currently four spots outside of the building. And they're proposing in this proposal to create two new spots, so then there would be six spots at the building. And so then it would be converted from a ten-spot parking building to a six-spot parking building. And it would be converted from a six-apartment dwelling to an eight-apartment dwelling. So my question would be, does this meet the minimum of parking for the garages, you know, as it relates to the, the bylaws? And I, my understanding was that the bylaws indicate that there's supposed to be a minimum of one spot, parking spot for dwelling.
Well, it, it doesn't meet the zoning requirement for parking, and that's why he's requested these variances.
Right, so, but will it then not meet the requirement after if the variance is? So can the variances actually change the law?
Yes, the, the variances can give relief from the requirements of the bylaw. That's, that's our purpose, to consider whether or not variance from provisions of the bylaw are allowable.
Okay, yeah, okay. So they, they have four outdoor parking spots now, they want to create another two. That would be six. And then, yeah, okay, so currently there are six cars parking-
Bylaw requires ten, he wants six.
Pardon me?
The bylaw requires ten parking spaces, he's requesting approval for six outdoor parking spaces.
Correct, yes, yeah, okay. And so that was my, that was one of my concerns, because there have been some parking issues here in the last couple of months. And I've, I've lived here for sixteen years, and so I know that the, I'm just, just wanting to make sure, because these, these units are going in directly below me as well, so I'm just trying to keep on top of what's happening and make sure everything is going to be, um, you know, in, in line with the way it would maintain a good living environment.
Okay, is that, is that it?
The other thing I had was that, that I just noticed the sign for this, this meeting the night before I was supposed to put in an email. So, I didn't really have much time to prepare for this. Um, but anyway, it's, uh, just saying that, um, it, it, the, the sign went up, as far as I know, three days before the deadline. And I only noticed it the night before, because we all go out the back of the building, and it was, uh, for parking and cars. And then it, the sign was on the front. I just wondered if people could receive letters, um, to each individual tenant so that we know what this proposal is, um, that it's going to happen, you know?
So, uh, we don't have access to tenant information. In the Planning Act, uh, requirements are to notify owners within sixty meters, but due to the postal disruption, we haven't been mailing notices. We've been posting in the Toronto Star. And then the applicants are required to post on the property. Um, the applicant or the owner of the property should have notified the tenants of the building on their own, even though the sign was posted at the front. So, that's something you can raise with the owner or the property manager.
Yeah, 'cause they didn't notify us directly that this meeting was happening, you know? Um, they said they were putting in a proposal for a variance, but it was very vague and it didn't say when any of this was happening. So, um, anyway, yes, um, that was a concern of mine, because I would have liked to have had more time. And then there's this parking issue, and I understand that's what this meeting's about. I'm just, um, hoping we, um, uh, uh, that, that's it. I, I will say that's it for now.
Okay, uh, panel, any questions or comments for Ms. Mobbs?
Just, yeah, just curious. I think the nearest subway station, um, or transit station is Old Mill. Is that, is that correct?
Uh, yes, for TPC Subway, yes, it is, yeah.
Okay, so it's really, it's, it's a car-dependent neighborhood where you are, pretty much.
I find that, yeah, I do find that. Um, I did live here for ten years before having a car. And, um, then I've had six years with a car in this building. And, yeah, it's been, uh, life-changing, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, I had one question also. Uh, thank you so much for taking the time to, to speak with us this morning. I was, I was wondering, you alluded to the fact that, uh, in the last month or so, there's some issues with respect to parking. Uh, what, what are the issues, or what is the issue?
Oh, well, it came up for me in particular and, um, another tenant where, so this building was, was sold last year, and, um, it's a six-plex. Uh, when it was purchased, there were two tenants remaining, and the tenancy was carried over to the new owner. I'm one of those. Um, so, uh, then they did some renovations, uh, extensive renovations, and just started getting new tenants, um, at the beginning of the summer. So, they, um, once they, um, got two new tenant, two of the units occupied, that would have been four occupied, they had, so there were two new tenants. Um, and, um, they decided, the parking lot is, was kind of old, and it had those parking curb, um, cement things that you, that designate parking spots, and that was it. But they decided to, um, the new owner said, sent a letter saying they were going to paint, um, and number this, paint lines and number the spots. So, they did that, and they said, and then we will assign, um, we will assign the parking spots to the various tenants. And so, um, so, so when they, they did that, and when they assigned the spots, they, they, they told me that I should park off to the side in front of one of the garages instead of the spot where I had parked for sixteen years. And, um, so I, and I, I had, it took me about a month to like work with them in, on letters and phone calls and messages and getting on the portal and like giving messages and not getting responses to finally get through to someone to say, listen, this has been my spot for sixteen years, and you've, you've taken it away from me. So, basically, when I presented documentation to them of my tenancy acknowledgement and my tenant card and my tenant information card to, from the new, for the new owner, designated exactly where my spot was, they, they eventually gave it back to me and said, sorry, and thanks for your patience, et cetera. So, anyway, and then there's another tenant who has two spots. And so now, the tenant who was in my spot is now off to the side where I was. So, they're gonna create two new spots, and there are two cars that need spots at this point. But when they fill a new, um, the, the last remaining apartment, now there's, now there's a third, uh, now there's a fifth tenant here, and she's parking off to the side. So, anyway, um, yeah, other people will just have to park on the street and get permits, I guess, for that.
So, it's really a problem with assignment of parking spaces, right? Are, are parking spots assigned like, uh, by apartment number or by name?
Um, not by apartment. Yeah, well, they, I was assigned number three finally after my, um, my, after my, you know, presentation to them for, for the last.
Thank you so much.
And that was where I had parked for sixteen years, was the start spot, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, panel, any other questions or comments? We're good? Yep. Okay, Mr. Pomeroy?
Yes. Yes, hello.
Yes, you now have an opportunity to rebut the remarks made by Ms. Mobbs. If you could do that, please?
Yes, thank you. Um, I think I'll keep them strictly to the parking, uh, to the best of my knowledge. I mean, we were, we were involved in the, um, the notification process and met the deadlines for posting the sign. So, I won't speak anymore to that. But, but basically, the variances requested are for the, uh, parking reduction. Um, there, and, uh, uh, we've reviewed that with Transportation, who is now in support of the changes. Um, as we noted to them, at the time of development for this building, uh, we have the original drawings, and it shows six parking spaces. But by today's standards, that would only be four. They wouldn't actually fit, uh, three, uh, legal spaces into the, into the building currently. Um, that said, the, uh, since the, uh, the owner purchased the building, um, and I think long before that, the, 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 the parking, uh, the garages have not been in use, um, for parking. So, in, in relevance to the, the, uh, to the tenants, um, I, I, well, I can't speak to the, to the history of, of all of them, but I don't think they've had access to those in a, in a long time. Um, however, we are able to add, uh, two spaces outside. And as noted, we'll have a total of eight units as proposed, and we'll have six spaces. Um, as, you know, the current bylaw would not require, um, new spaces for, for the, uh, the two new units. However, uh, the variances are a result of reducing, um, the, uh, what is, what is current, and, and that's to do with the interior spaces. So, um, uh, yeah, so we're adding the, adding the two units. Um, but effectively, you know, we can provide the same amount of parking, which is, uh, you know, which would be one per suite, uh, for the current tenants. And going forward, um, that would be a part of the lease, uh, for the two new suites. Uh, if, if all spaces are spoken for, then that would be part of the lease, that there wouldn't be one available, and, and the, uh, future tenants would either, uh, do street parking or, uh, or be using transit, so.
Okay, thank you. Panel, any questions or comments?
Chair, just one last question of the speaker. Um. All the various, the various before, there's four variances, and they all relate to, to, uh, traffic or parking, um, movements, et cetera. Uh, you've read Transportation's report of October the thirtieth, and you're okay with those conditions, are you not?
Yes, I are.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think we can move into committee then for a motion.
Chair, I'm gonna move that, uh, the four variances, uh, be authorized. Uh, move approval of the application, uh, subject to, uh, transportation conditions of October the thirtieth. Uh, four variances that are being requested, all, uh, traffic and parking-related. Uh, Transportation Services, uh, concurs with what is being proposed with conditions. So, with conditions, move approval, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Is there a seconder for Mr. Gully's motion?
I can second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson, all in favor? The application's been approved? Thank you, Mr. Pomeroy. Thank you, Ms. Mobbs. Moving on to item eight, twenty-eight Aerosmith Avenue. Purpose of this application is to construct a one-story rear addition. There's one variance for the side yard setback. We have a ravine and natural features protection condition one requested. TRCA has cleared the application. We have three support letters. Panel, may we treat this as straightforward? Thank you. The agent is, uh, G Salvatore Fidenzio.
Yes, hi, hello.
Hi.
I'm the agent, Fidenzio Salvatore, seventy-three Greenbrook Drive.
Okay, um, we, the very straightforward application here, one variance. Uh, we don't really need a presentation. Are you okay with proceeding on the basis of?
I'm in agreement, yes.
Any questions if we have any and not making a presentation? Is that okay with you?
Yes, it's okay.
Okay, good. So, panel, any questions or comments?
I, I was just gonna ask the applicant if he understood the fact that, uh, there was an urban forestry condition. Number one, you're okay with that?
Uh, yes, I am. We have actually, uh, prepared, uh, a full restoration plan. We actually, uh, for the, uh, conservation requirement. And we have, um, on that plan, we have at least twelve threes, and of course, a variety of shrub materials, a ground cover.
Okay, thank you. And, and you've also received, uh, an okay from TRCA. The Toronto Regional Conservation Authority. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, uh, let's consider a motion.
Chair, I'm gonna move that, uh, the one, this application be approved, indeed a minor, uh, variance, uh, with, uh, urban forestry condition number one.
And I'm happy to second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Gully and Ms. Alderson, all in favor? That application is approved unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Committee.
You're, you're very welcome. Moving on to item nine, five-oh-one-oh Steels Avenue West. Purpose of this application is to permit a medical office use. There's one variance. We have no agency comments or conditions. No public speakers registered, Thomas, is that correct?
Yes, so we have two agents. So, Isabella will be the primary agent, and then David Drake is the agent-owner representative. He was just there if there's any questions, but, yeah.
Okay, but, uh, Ms. Supper will be the prime, is, is listed here as the primary agent?
Yes, correct.
So, um, yeah, we, we'll, I'll speak to Isabella Supper then?
Hello, everybody. Um, I believe we were, um, gonna actually have David speak, but I'm happy to take it on if it's too much of a hassle for committee to, uh, permit David, um, on the call at this moment.
So, he'll be on the call, but he, he's not speaking. We, we only hear from one.
No problem. No problem.
Is that okay?
Of course, of course, thank you, Mr. Chair.
He's patched in and available if we need him.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
I just, I just, I just wanna consult with my panel colleagues here. Um, are we satisfied this is straightforward and not requiring a presentation? Okay, so if, if you're okay, Ms. Supper, uh, we don't really need a presentation. This is pretty straightforward. Um, may we proceed with asking you any questions if we have any? And, uh, in lieu of a presentation?
No problem. Um, I'm here to answer any questions you might have, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, okay, good. So, let's do that. So, panel, any questions or comments?
Chair, I have one last question. Uh, thank you so much for, uh, joining us. I just wanted to ask, uh, there may be some parking spaces in this, uh, I'll call it a plaza, um, or mall. Um, there may be some parking spaces that are specifically assigned, but there are a lot of parking spaces that are open and free for anybody to use. Is that correct?
Uh, I believe so, Mr. Chair, uh, or Mr. Speaker. We are, um, as, I'm just the agent. I would have to confirm with the, uh, the owner-operator of the site, uh, which is Metris Properties. Um, I believe that all of the parking spaces are available, um, for whoever first comes.
So, it's shared use?
Other staff.
I, I guess what I'm getting, the point I'm trying to make is, uh, the parking for the mall, even though there are individual units, uh, the parking is shared by all.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, um, any other questions or comments?
Chair, the only comment I wanted to make was that, uh, in, in former Tobico, of course, and, and maybe some of the other municipalities, medical offices used to have, uh, additional parking requirements over commercial. So, the old standard was five point five spaces per ninety-three square meters, whereas for, uh, general commercial, it was three. Uh, so, that's the distinction, uh, why they're asking for medical office use, in my view. Thank you.
Okay, we ready for a motion?
I, I prefer to make a motion, Chair. I'm gonna move that, uh, uh, the variance being requested be approved. I believe it meets, it meets the four tests. The parking is not a concern, it's shared. Uh, move approval, no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Is there a seconder for Mr. Gully's motion?
I will second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Popovich, all in favor? Unanimously approved? Thank you, Ms. Supper.
Thank you very much. Have a good rest of your day.
Moving on to item ten, eight Hill Down Tree Road. Purpose is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. There are eight variances. We have Urban Forestry requesting conditions one and two. Two co- conditions requested by community planning. We received an additional cover letter outlining reasons for changes to plans. And we have two, actually, two registered speakers from the, the same address. So, I will ask, uh, Yarmo, Karen Yarmo Franco and Ivan Franco to decide which one of you will represent, uh, eighty Will Wimbledon Road. We won't, we won't listen to two presentations from the same address, but we'll get there. The agent is Thiru Roshan, Roshan? Oh, hello, sorry. I was, I was waiting to listen for your voice.
No worries. Good morning, Mr. Chair and fellow committee members.
Yeah, if you could, if you could present, maybe, maybe highlight, uh, wh- what has been written to us from eighty Wimbledon Road, comment on that. They're gonna have a chance to speak, and you'll have a chance to rebut. But I think we would benefit from hearing your take on that right now. And also, um... Oh, yeah, your, your cover letter, that came in kinda late. So, if you could just sort of walk us through your, uh, your cover letter that was submitted recently on the reasons for changes to plans.
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. And just for the record, my name's Roshan Thiru. I'm a planner at Design Plan Services, Inc., located at eighty-seven Skyway Avenue, Suite 200. The only change to the plans were that was the design of the proposed walkway within the front yard. It previously led to the street, but now it leads towards a driveway. No variances were, uh, revised or altered.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, I guess just to address the neighbors' concern as of right now. Um, my client did approach them to discuss their concerns. And from my understanding, the neighbors do have, uh, concerns with height. However, I just want to note that we are not seeking any variances to the, to the height. Uh, the maximum height permit is nine and a half meters, and we're proposing nine point four meters. In addition, I would like to note that, uh, the side yard setback, we are actually increasing to eighty Wimbledon. So, I would provide, I'll just... to eighty Wimbledon. So, I would provide, I'll just provide some justification for the side yard setback. So the proposed dwelling will be located one to, one point two meters from the south side lot line, resulting in a total aggregate side yard width of three point six six meters, or eighteen point eight percent of the lot frontage. This represents only a thirty-centimeter reduction from the minimum requirement of one point five meters. And, um, as shown on slide three, um, the placement of the proposed dwelling is parallel to the north lot line. So because of the unique shape, the one point two meters is only for a pinch point along the south main wall, and then it increases. And it is important to note that the existing su- south side yard setback is one point four four meters, and the north side yard setback is one point six nine meters. And through this proposal, we are only improving the total aggregate side yard setback from three point one three meters to three point six six meters. And as I noted, the north side yard setbacks through this proposed, uh, development is compliant. And there have been similar, smaller side yard setbacks approved with the neighborhood, which I'm happy to provide if needed. Uh, I would also like to touch about the proposed building length and depth. Uh, so if we could just go to slide four, please. So the proposed building length is nineteen point eight nine meters, and the proposed building depth is twenty point six meters. However, I, I would like to note that the lot is irregular, so the building length and building depth calculations were calculated differently as compared to a standard rectangular lot. The perceived building length and depth is eighteen point eight meters, and if it was a regular rectangular lot, then the proposed length would just be one point eight meters above the maximum per- permitted length, and the building depth would be compliant. I do have, um, uh, if we could actually go to slide five, there's one more point I would like to make. On the second floor, the perceived building length decreases to seven point, seventeen point zero two meters, and the second floor is setback from the front main wall. And planning staff have recommended that the site plan be tied to any approval, which we have no concerns with and are agreeable to. Uh, there have been other approvals within the neighborhood, which I'm happy to provide if needed. I, I'm happy to answer any questions the neighbor has. Um, however, if the committee has any questions for me, I would happy, be happy to answer them, and i- it's my opinion that the proposal meets the four tests under section forty-five-one of the Planning Act. Thank you.
Okay, sir, are you familiar with an okay with urban forestry conditions one and two for a private and city-owned tree?
Correct.
Thank you. Panel, any other questions or comments? Okay, let's invite either Karen Yarmo Franco or Ivan Franco to, uh, represent eighty Wimbledon Road, their residence. Which is the next door.
Hello, good morning. It's Karen Yarmo Franco. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, yes, so I live at eighty Wimbledon Road with my husband, a property immediately beside eight Hill Down Tree, and I appreciate the comments of the agent. Um, we understand those, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I want to make clear, my intention isn't to criticize or alienate our new neighbors, but put forward some questions on the design and review process. Unfortunately, despite being one of the neighbors most directly impacted by this proposal, we didn't receive the official written public hearing notice of this meeting delivered to our door. And I understand, uh, uh, one of the committee members said that it's due to the postal strike, uh, and more importantly, the invitation for comments. So we missed your October thirtieth deadline, and therefore I requested to speak today. I also attempted to contact your application technician by phone to discuss this on Monday and Tuesday. Uh, she didn't return my calls. Um, so we understand that since the, the report from the planner strongly supports this proposal, we assume it'll be approved as is, but as is, but wanted to voice our concerns so that, you know, planners are cognizant of the impact on immediate neighbors. Um, the, the house design orders on, and, and edges on the boundaries of what's allowable, allowable with, uh, variances pushing those boundaries. So, yes, nine point four meters is what, uh, i- i- is more or less the tallest neighbor we could have expected. And I understand that nine point five is the maximum allowable height, but, uh, and while we understand the planner reviews the plans for allowable heights and footprints according to planning regulations and variance precedence in the neighborhood, uh, the planner doesn't live next door. So no shadow study was required or done, and while we requested through the owners that the designer prepare a side-by-side elevation with our home to, uh, get a, a sense of that, it was not provided despite us supplying full AutoCAD files of our home with all the required elevations and grades. So, uh, we have enjoyed beautiful light from the south side of our home for twenty-five years, and it seems unfortunately that that will come to an end. Uh, so, um, Mr. Chair and committee members, thank you for your time.
Thank, thank you very much. Uh, panel, any questions or comments for Ms. Yarmo Franco?
I just wanted to confirm the address. It's eighty Wimbledon?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ju- just one comment, yeah. Uh, thank you so much for taking the time to, um, meet with us this morning. Um, you understand that the, they, they have no, um, no height variance being requested, and I understand, uh, your concern with respect to shadowing. I just wanted to sort of highlight the fact that there, there is, uh, no, um, height variance being requested. I can understand that the length may be of concern, and the depth may be of concern, uh, but both those, uh, variances four and five, in my view anyway, um, would not contribute to any degree to any shadowing. I, I, I know you've been, you've had this wonderful, wonderful setting right now. Um, but again, the variances that may have resulted in different, uh, shadowing, um, I, I don't see any of them be adding to any, uh, reduced sunlight. Uh, that's all I wanted to say, but I can understand your concern. Thank you.
Okay, any other, uh, questions or comments? No?
Chair, ju- just one other comment, sorry. And, and to the speaker, I hope you're still there. I, I believe also the fact that planning, and, and, and I know you said that, uh, you know, the planners don't live there, but they are professional planners. They review the application, looking at all these, uh, specific, uh, performance standards. They have tied it to a condition, and I think that condition is a condition that, uh, uh, will ensure that they abide by the side plan, uh, that has been submitted with the application. And to the minute detail that they're also asking for one point five screening, et cetera. Thank you.
Okay, so that was framed as a motion?
Unless anyone else has, uh, any comments.
Oh, yeah, rebuttal, I'm sorry. Come on up. So, yeah, you, you have five minutes, if you need it, to rebut, uh, your neighbor.
Yes. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And, um, yeah, I, I, I would like to note that, yeah, we're not seeking, uh, height variance here. And on my site visit on October thirtieth, I did submit some photos. It's the last slide of my slideshow. Um, eighty Wimbledon is a two-story dwelling, and the proposal is also a two-story dwelling. So we're going to be maintaining the existing character of the neighborhood. I'm happy to answer any more questions about the variances itself or the proposal. However, again, it's my opinion that the proposal meets the four tests under section forty-five-one of the Planning Act. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Questions, comments for the agent? None? Then let's have a motion.
Uh, Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion on this. Um, I, I did listen to the, um, the neighbor carefully, particularly since, uh, the speaker is immediately adjacent, uh, to the, um, application before us today. There appear to be, uh, a number of variances, and sometimes the question comes up, eight variances for one application. But I, I believe when, uh, you look at, uh, the specific of the, of those being requested, uh, there are items that don't necessarily create, um, onerous, uh, changes to the ur- urban form. I think a couple of that stood out for me, particularly was, was the building, um, length and, and depth. And again, the, the, the additional length and depth that's being requested is nominal. Uh, the coverage going from thirty-three percent to thirty-seven point nine, nine four, uh, results, uh, in a fairly modest house of about three hundred and seventy-four square meters. Similarly, the GFA, um, going from, uh, zero point five to zero point five four, uh, is nominal. I believe this, the six, sorry, the eight variances individually and collectively do meet the four tests. Um, I'm gonna move approval subject to planning conditions, uh, reported in, in their, uh, submission of October the thirtieth, and, uh, urban forestry condition number one and two.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Is there a second or for Mr. Gully's motion?
I, uh, will second that and echo my colleague's comments.
Thank you, Ms. Popovich.
On the application.
Thank you. All in favor? The application is approved unanimously. Thank you. Item eleven. Forty-six Tenth Street. Purpose is to maintain the existing front porch that is currently under construction. There's one variance. No agency comments or conditions. No registered speakers.
So, uh, Mr. Chair, we have a switch-up for the agent. So it's not gonna be Peter, it's gonna be Ron, I believe? So he's in person right now. He's gonna be the, uh, it's the owner. So he'll be speaking on behalf of this item.
Okay, so... You're, you're Mr. Maze? Oh, you're the owner. Okay, I just, I just want to canvass my colleagues here. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, do we need a presentation on this straightforward application?
No, thank you.
No? Okay. If you could just make yourself available, if we have any questions, you're gonna know instantly, uh, in lieu of making a presentation. It's very straightforward. We don't really need any clarification from you. Is that okay?
Yes, very good.
Okay, so questions or comments? No? None? Okay, then, uh, maybe we have a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I will bring the motion to, um, approve this application. I do not see any conditions or comments.
No.
From any department.
Thank you. Is there a second or for Ms. Popovich's motion? Mr. Gully, thank you. All in favor? Unanimously approved.
Thank you kindly.
You could've stayed home and watched. But we're glad you came. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Moving on to, we have two more. Item, yeah, two more before lunch. Item twelve. Forty-five Bridgetown Drive. Purpose is to construct a one-story front addition and a new covered front porch. One variance. No agency comments or conditions. No registered speakers. May we treat this application as straightforward? Thank you. Jade Soriani is the agent? Jade Soriani?
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Oh, hello.
Good morning.
Good morning. So, uh, if you were listening, we, we just, uh, agreed that we don't really need a presentation on your very straightforward application. Are you okay with us proceeding with questions, i- if we have any? And, and in lieu of...
Yes.
In, in lieu of a presentation, thank you. Okay, so...
Yes, absolutely. Let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Good to hear. So, panel, any questions or comments?
Just a comment. I just have note here that it, it's an improvement over the existing condition. Great architecture reminds me of Winnipeg architecture, so I just wanted to say that.
Okay, I think I know where you're going. So maybe we have a motion?
Uh, yeah, I can make it. I've got my mic still on, so, uh, I'm happy to approve this, um, one, uh, one variance, um, with no conditions. I believe it meets the four tests under the Planning Act.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson. Is there a second or for Ms. Alderson's motion?
Happy to second.
Ms. Ruddock, thank you. All in favor? That application is unanimously approved. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Finally, our last item on this morning's agenda. Seventy-three Leggett Avenue. Purpose to construct a one-story front addition. There are three variances. We have ravine and natural features protection condition one. TRCA has cleared the application. Uh, we have no other correspondence or evidence on this application. Panel, are we agreeable to treating this as straightforward?
Yes, I agree.
Thank you. Marco Vera is the agent.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
Members of the committee. My name is Marco Vera. I'm at two five seven Dunraven Drive.
Thank you. Are you agreeable to proceeding, uh, to us proceeding without you making a presentation?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I believe I am. I think the application is pretty straightforward.
Okay, no, I was gonna say, it's not up to me, it's up to you. So we're gonna proceed that way then. I'll just ask a couple of questions. Are you familiar with an okay with ravine and natural features protection condition one?
Through you, Mr. Chair, we are.
Good. Panel, any other questions or comments for Mr. Vera? None. Then let's have a motion.
I'll move to approve this application. I find it to be minor in nature and consistent with the four tests.
Thank you, Ms. Ruddock.
To check, um, ravine, um, condition number one.
RNFP condition one, correct. Uh, is there a second or?
Uh, I'm happy to second that motion. Again, I have a note here, great architecture, so...
Yep.
No, it's not Winnipeg style. I think it's just...
Okay.
...Frostburgite style, actually.
Irrelevant, but welcome. All in favor? That application is approved unanimously. We are now adjourned, and we will reconvene to handle the balance of this agenda at, should we stick to, oh, it's only eleven oh six? I keep looking at that thinking, saying, why aren't I hungry? So, one o'clock. We can't meet earlier?
We cannot.
Correct.
Okay.